If we get a quorum of Seabrook, then we can kick the policy section in. As Chair of the SAU 21 Joint School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order two zero two zero dash or four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the SAU 21 Joint School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number. Six four six eight seven six nine nine two three and webinar ID eight four seven seven eight four four five six three seven. Or by clicking on the website address which was listed on the agenda. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 Office at www.sau21.org. If anybody has a problem, please call six zero three nine two six eight nine nine two extension one zero three or email at R Evans at sau21.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law.
Greg Parrish.
Present, family in and out.
Anthony Lang.
Present, family in and out.
Jason Ferius. Jill Swayze.
Present, family in and out.
John Bailey.
Present, family now.
Greg Duffy. Martin Tavishian.
Present, alone.
Nermina Peterson.
Present with family.
Tom Von Jess.
Present, alone.
Forrest Carter. Jennifer Hubbard.
Present with family.
Jessica Brown. Kelly Huber. Mike Rabideau.
Present and alone.
Jim Kimes.
Present and alone.
Rebecca Burdick. Sharon Gordon.
Present with family.
Heidi Tarasina.
Present with family in and out.
Henry Marsh.
Present with family in and out.
Leslie LaFawn.
Present, dogs in and out.
And Tony Delano. I have the roll call taken.
Thank you, Rhonda. Before we get started, I just wanted to do a make a quick comment. It's kind of came to me as I was looking at the approval of the minutes and kind of going through everything. It's been pretty obvious that kind of the return to school aspect of the agenda has really dominated things over the last six months or so, and rightfully so. But I think one of the things that I hope to achieve, and I'd hope everybody takes into consideration as we have this meeting is really the purpose of the joint board, especially for anybody who, you know, may be a new member, really is to kind of work collectively for the benefit of all. And I'm hoping that kind of as we laid out this agenda, that's something we all take into consideration is really working together to try to make the best situation we can for all of our relative schools, schools and towns. So just something to take into consideration, clearly return to school and reopening. It's still an important agenda item, but there's, there's a number of other things which we're going to go through today, which you know, are just as important and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to tackle all those. So first on the approval of, first on the agenda for us is the approval of minutes and there's, there are six board, joint board meeting minute dates here. Does anybody have any comments on them? We have the ability to do a consent agenda, which can be approved, all of them, but if anybody has anything they wanted to bring up or any corrections they saw, please vocalize them now. Not hearing anything. I'll take silences. There's no comments. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion to approve all minutes as contained in the agenda.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Anthony Lang.
Paul Stain.
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jill Swayze.
Yes.
John Bailey.
Yes.
Martin Tavishian.
Yes.
Nermina Peterson.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Mike Rabideau.
Yes, sorry.
Jim Kimes.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Heidi Tarasina.
Yes.
Henry Marsh.
Yes.
And Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda. We're going to skip over the policy review for now. And so we have a quorum from all five boards. Next on the agenda is, there's nothing, we have a agenda item for presentation, but there's nothing there. Is that correct, Bill? Okay, great. So next would be questions and comments from those in attendance, a public comment. Do they have chat enabled, Rhonda?
Rhonda, do you want to describe how they would do?
Yeah, if you're, if you're logged in on Zoom, there is the chat button at the bottom of the screen. You can just click on that. Or click on raise your hand, actually. And then I guess that's what I needed to say is you need to raise your hand and then it bumps you to the top of the list. And we'll, we will know that you have a comment to make and then I'll turn your microphone on. We do have eight people in the audience. At this time, I'm not seeing anybody selecting the raise their hand feature. If they decide to do that, I will let you know, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. Okay, next is action items, school board audit questionnaire. Matt, I'm assuming this is you.
Thank you. So thank you, Jim, for moving up the audit questionnaire. I know everyone's been anxiously awaiting this agenda item. So as you are all aware, in your individual districts, we do go through the process of of questioning the board on financial control items. So as part of our annual audit, we do complete this questionnaire. So I will run through the questions and if, if I guess as a group just can answer, or maybe Jim, you can answer on behalf of the joint board, and if anyone disagrees, please speak up. So do you have any knowledge or suspicions of fraud affecting your entity?
No.
Have you received any communications from employees, former employees, regulators, or others alleging fraud?
No.
Have you identified any specific risks of fraud within your entity?
No.
Has the board adopted a universal code of ethics for members and employees to follow?
Yes.
And that copy has been furnished?
Yes.
Have you or any related party of yours had any interest or indirect or indirect in any of the following transactions or pending or incomplete transactions since July 1st, 2018, to which the school district, SAU, or any retirement savings, pension, or other similar plan was or is to be a party? The first of which is the sale, purchase, exchange, or leasing of property?
No.
Receiving or furnishing of goods, services, or facilities?
No.
Transfer or receipt of income or assets?
No.
Maintenance of bank balances as compensating balances for the benefit of another?
No.
Any other transactions?
No.
Does the board formally authorize all dispersments, both vendor and payroll, prior to the release of the funds?
Yes.
Describe how the board stays informed of the latest changes in the laws and regulations pertaining to the entity.
Updates are provided through the superintendent and the SAU office.
Does the board review comparative reports of estimated actual revenues and appropriations and expenditures?
Yes.
And that's done approximately five times a year. What procedures does the board follow in reviewing or using these reports? For example, does the board normally meet with the department heads as part of this process? Also, does the board review both the revenue and expenditure reports?
Both revenue and expenditure reports are reviewed at the joint board meeting with the business admin.
Has the board approved a disaster recovery plan in the event of loss or interruption of the IT function?
Yes.
Is there a written investment policy adopted?
Yes.
And that was last approved on April 30th of 2019. Have you adopted the use of either debit or credit cards by employees?
Yes.
Does the board have knowledge of any funds or bank accounts that are not in custody of the treasurer?
No.
Has the board approved the fund balance policy in compliance with GASB 54?
Yes.
And finally, does the school district, SAU, have knowledge of any crowdfunding activities? So that there is one crowdfunding activity that we did do actually SAU wide, that was the school nutrition GoFundMe campaign to raise money over the summer to fund the free meals for our SAU. So that, that's the only item that we're aware of. And if, if you have any additional ones, please feel free to let me know. All right, in that case, I will prepare this for signature from the school board chair to submit to our auditors. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. The next action item is B, which is SAU 21 Proposed Calendar 2021-22.
So, thank you. So the calendar which we reviewed, the proposed calendar assumes that we will be in in-person instruction for the 21-22 school year. It, it also assumes that we will be in a position to not utilize snow days. That is, our assumption is that we'll be able to utilize remote days to make up snow days. So we believe this is a much firmer calendar in terms of starting and ending date than we've been, than we've had in the past. So we have at the B, in August, we've scheduled two new teacher days followed by three days for all of our teachers as per the collective bargaining agreement, but we've taken some of those teacher days and put them at the front of the calendar. Students then have three days prior to the Labor Day weekend, and then, then school essentially kicks into regular weeks come the seventh. And the school year has the traditional breaks built in. We've also built in what we believe are the, the ends of the trimest, the end of the trimesters. Thank you, David, for all your work on, on this and that in particular. Our professional learning days tied in with calendar that we have situations involving Election Day in some districts and ends on, I believe, the fifteenth with the last day for teachers being the sixteenth. So this is our 187-day calendar. We've utilized largely hours to get there, and we comfortably make the 990 hours in all of our districts in order to meet the minimum requirements. So we're happy to try to answer any questions you may have. But this is the calendar we would then use to, to build each of our district calendars, which are essentially the same. We've gotten to the point now where we can essentially build a similar calendar across the SAU. Parents like that because their high schooler isn't in school while their elementary students are, are off, which is something that this SAU encountered up till a few years ago when we started to build a more coherent, consistent calendar across all the districts. So we're happy to try to answer any questions you may have on this proposal and would ask you if, if you're so inclined to to vote to approve this tonight.
Bill, it's Greg Parrish. Guys, forbid we, we do remote or the learning models we're currently using for the remaining part of the school year and do not get back in the classrooms for all the students. Is that enough upfront time for the new teachers and the teachers in August? Or are we contractually obligated to, I guess, that number of days?
Um, I'm going to answer those as two different parts. So if I'm to assume a year where we would be going remote, I'm going to answer it this way, Greg, you tell me if it's, if I'm, if I'm off base. Would, would we, if, if we were to look at a calendar like that, would we necessarily need to build in the amount of time upfront that we did this year? Probably not. Might we come back and make some adjustments to this calendar? Yeah, we probably would, but they wouldn't be as significant as this year's adjustments.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a question. It's Leslie. Is this calendar the same like with our SST students at Winnicott? How are we with the Exeter calendar?
Now, it's a good question. And as much as we know about theirs, and we have discussed calendars at, at the board level, this is consistent enough with our previous calendars and what we know of what Exeter's doing in calendar that SST students would have their schedule, Leslie.
Thank you.
Leslie, I would add at least in the beginning of the year, we're on par in terms of dates with them. So there's
I know, because they seem to have, we seem to have issues with early release days with them. That seems to always be the, and if they don't have the same, then we're, they're missing out. So, okay, thank you.
And Bill, one quick question. No, no issue with the calendar at all. This may tag off the Greg's question a little bit. So some things about COVID have been instructive, like parent teacher conferences being through Zoom might be better than face to face, even when we come out of this pandemic event, right? Because it's more convenient. And then teacher meetings or teachers in instructional days upfront in the year, even if we don't have to teach specific things about tools, might be beneficial. Is there anything that you might want to take out of our experience the last year and a half that you applied to the, the new calendar that might change it from what you have now?
David, do you have any, any comment on, on that? I mean, I'm thinking of, we built, we have built three days in upfront. It, I'm not sure if it makes the days different or what we do with them different. There, there may be, there may be things that we're able to do remotely because we're able to bring people together easier, better. That don't necessarily have to do with how many days we schedule, but have to do with what we do on those days.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would split that into two pieces. There's a structural answer.
Look, I think you froze, David.
Frozen. But I, I can give you back on that. We have a significant number of online trainings that are required before the school year starts. And perhaps we can capitalize on that.
You were in the middle of a good thought, David.
Right. So one of the things, the pedagogical thing is what I was on. And we did have, have an opportunity with new teachers and with our full faculty this year to cross schools in a way that we really haven't before. And, you know, some of that has limitations, obviously, but I, I think that we can leverage some of that in terms of content, but not necessarily in terms of a structure of the days and number of days.
Bill, it's Greg Parrish again. I have another question for you. You mentioned that this does not count for snow days as the remote learning that we're experiencing now, be able to use then. As you know, in Hampton Falls, we use this blizzard bag approach during the winter with the snow days, but we don't use the blizzard bag every day. We use a similar model across the district that we're using in Hampton Falls, so the kids can at least enjoy a snow day every now and then?
Well, we could. There's nothing that prevents us from doing that and, and rescheduling days or else carving them off at the end of the year because we have enough hours. So there's nothing that prevents us from doing that. I think we were looking at this from the, from the perspective of we, if we, if, if we don't want to, we, we have a model now that would not require us to make them up.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Now, if you got to a certain number, I mean, you, you, you might decide that, you know, you, you might make different decisions, but, but those are decisions, you, those are decisions that you can make.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments about the calendar? Can I get a motion to accept the 2021-22 calendar as proposed?
I'll make a motion to accept the calendar as proposed for 2021-2022.
Rhonda, if you want to do that.
Leslie LaFawn.
Whoa, hold on.
You just muted yourself. Yes. Henry Marsh.
Yes.
Heidi Tarasina.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Jim Kimes.
Yes.
Mike Rabideau.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Nermina Peterson.
Yes.
Martin Tavishian.
Yes.
Don Bailey.
Yes.
Jill Swayze.
Yes.
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
And Anthony Lang.
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent goals 2020-21.
Yeah, so before I do that, let me sort of pick up on comment that Jim made upfront about sort of framing some of this. And I think this will serve as a decent introduction to some of these, to the proposed goals, which again, the the OC committee looked at a few weeks ago. So one of the things that, that I did that we've done over the last couple of weeks is go back and revisit the, the entry plan. I sent that entry plan document to, to new board members. And, and one of the things I might, I thought might be helpful is to spend just a few minutes. And if you have questions, I'm happy to try to answer them, but on, on the areas that were that, that I built into that plan based on interviews, document reviews, those kinds of things that we said were areas that we wanted to try to work on over the coming years and try to give you some idea of where at least we think we are with, with some of those. So I divided these into three categories, areas where we believe we've made some significant progress, areas where there's been some progress, but there's still significant work to be done. And then one or two areas where, quite frankly, I just called them not yet. Really scientific way of looking at them. So, um, so let me, let me sort of walk you through some, if not all, all of these and just, I think this will frame some of the, some of the goal proposals. So the, the entry plan, I, what I tried to do was propose some findings based on those interviews, document reviews. Quite frankly, just living the first few months of the job and then made some, some, some recommendations. So one of the areas where I think we've made some significant progress, doesn't mean we're, we're there yet, but is in the competency based area where we talked about creating a plan, making sure we had the right kind of professional development, communication with our stakeholders, and, and then getting in areas like grading, reporting, and move when ready. And significant progress has been made over the last couple of years. Again, a lot of work yet to be done, but, but that was an area that, that, that we highlighted in the plan. We had very little, if any, professional learning for support staff two years ago, two and a half years ago. In fact, they weren't scheduled in for many professional learning days and, and we've been able over the last couple of years, again, first of those areas largely through David's efforts, but this area largely through Caroline's efforts to, to really create a professional learning plan for those educational associates, which are focused on the needs of our students. So a lot of progress has been, been made in that, in that area through the collective bargaining agreement in terms of building those days in through the budgeting process, in terms of building those days in, and then in terms of actually having a plan. Tight coupling and defined autonomy, the, the area of, I think I said, I think I said to what represented this group some number of years ago that, that, that on some level, I didn't think you as boards were taking advantage of some of the, some of the advantages of actually belonging to an SAU. There was a lot, there were a lot of examples of five different districts trying to create certain things on their own as five different districts. And we proposed that we, that we take a look at what some of those things may be, that we take a look at where collaboration and centralization might actually enhance the efforts of the district. We have some really great examples. Caroline's position is, is one of them. The, the ESOL position that we created at the SAU level, because none of you could actually create the right kind of position on your own as districts outside of Seabrook, but, but as an SAU, we were able to do that. And there are a lot of other less people-centered kinds of examples of that. And again, you know, it's, it's an issue in, in progress, but, but we're, we're not there yet. We think there's a lot yet that can be done in that area. And then social emotional learning and bullying prevention and you know, I guess if I was redoing an entry plan now, I would talk about the, the new laws in terms of Title IX and sexual harassment where, where we've been, been able to implement, in particular, social emotional learning efforts, less so curriculum, but a lot of professional development and all across the SAUs. And again, that's been a large responsibility of, of Caroline. So those are areas that we feel really good about. I mean, again, a lot more work to be done, but we feel really, really, really good about them. There are a number of areas here where there's, there's been some progress, but there's a lot to be done. We had a great, in terms of curriculum alignment, a great mathematics program review going with a lot of aggressive work that needed to be done. But quite frankly, that hit a roadblock come March of last year and, and we haven't done much to, I'll use the word burden staff with, with what it's going to take to implement that, because quite frankly, they have enough on their plate right now. But, but those kinds of curriculum alignment or curriculum review processes, we wanted to build the model to actually have that happen. We have one planned for next for world language, to take a look at what we're doing in world language in all of our districts across the SAU to make sure the kids all have a, a good experience. On parent communication, we talked about, and it's funny to look back now, we did not have the ability two years ago to communicate with parents from the SAU level. I didn't have the ability to send a message to parents two years ago when I first came. So, so this was low hanging, this was a, this was a low bar two years ago, right? It was really centered around, can we improve our websites so that they actually have material that people are interested in looking at? Can we improve our SAU website? And can we build the capacity so that the SAU level, we have the ability to, I don't know, call off school for snow? Right? And, and now we do. And, and many, many people probably think since March, we've used it too much to communicate with them, but we have that, that ability. But there's a lot more to go in terms of that, once we have that base, basic architecture in place. Third, another area was I mentioned back then about leadership coaching. We have a lot of people who were very young in their experiences as principals or other leaders. And there, there was a real dearth of and a real screaming out among those people for, for coaching, for, for someone to bounce ideas off of. The, the great news, and I'll just say it here, is that you know, two of our districts have hired very experienced elementary principals who've jumped into that role with some of the, some of the new people. Both Beth and Susan have, in Northampton and Lincoln Akerman have jumped in and, and want to do that kind of work. So they've, they've worked with newer principals in particular, but, but some other roles as well. But we don't have the formal kind of structure that really, we really wanted to build into place, but we're lucky to have both of them to sort of do that. School culture and communication. So this was really centered around making sure that teachers felt they had a role in decision-making. That was something that I heard That was something that I heard a lot of in the entry plan process. And again, in some districts, this is much further along than in others, probably because we, we've been less focused on the formal sort of structures to ensure that that happens. And to make sure that there's communication, for example, you know, and something Matt's really done a great job with, which is why I put this in this category. Two years ago, when I first did this entry plan, teachers regularly reported that they had no idea what was in the budgets that were being proposed. And Matt stepped in with principals last year and offered to present with them, in some cases, did that so that we would make sure that teachers understood what those budget proposals looked like as they went through the board. As, as one very simple, simple sort of piece of this. We set out a couple of years ago to really improve on our human resource strategies. Simple things like certain forms that we use that right now are very paper-based. And there've been a lot of, a lot of efforts made in, in those areas to define the hiring process, to make sure some of those things have moved to, to electronic base to make it easier for principals and others to go through the hiring process, to, 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 to make recommendations, to bring people on board. But we still have some work to do in terms of digitizing a number of those forms and making certain kinds of information for employees easier to access. And then SAU administration, you know, a work in progress in that a couple of years ago, I said to you in this finding area that we, there were significant demands on, on a five district SAU central office team in terms of time management and quality of life issues. And we did make the, the pretty significant change of stacking our meetings. We looked at these recommendation possibilities and added stacking of meetings so that instead of five different nights for five different boards, we have three. We did some things in terms of Matt's schedule in particular to free him up at certain times of the year to, to say he didn't need to be at board meetings because of the number of budget committee meetings that he ends up at, and that's coming up again. But we have a lot of work to do yet in this area in terms of, of making these. And I said these, this to Jim when I talked to him and some others a couple of weeks ago, that we have, we have a lot of, a lot of work to do to make sure that your jobs at your SAUs. And, and I'm not speaking as your superintendent now. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking as someone who's been doing this a long time and wants to make sure that you're able to attract and retain great people to these jobs. And right now with five different districts and the amount of time and budget committees and all, these are difficult jobs compared to single district SAUs. And, and I'm going to continue to work with you and to work with this team to make sure that those jobs are, are doable and that we find ways to streamline things and, and/or divide up responsibilities among the four of us so that these jobs are, are more doable, so that they're attractive to people. And then, as I mentioned at the Hampton Falls Board meeting a couple of weeks ago, when we were talking about some of this, the one that we build in here that we just have not gotten to at all yet, but is very much on our table for the coming years is, is strategic planning. And strategic planning in a five district SAU is more difficult. It has to be the right kind of framework that allows each district to see themselves within that, that framework and build off of, of that, of that framework. But that's, that's still very much a, 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 a goal. I'll say in the second part of the recommendation, here's one where COVID's benefited us or forced us to do something. You know, we said at the time, when a candidate should develop a formal process for conducting ongoing surveys of high school graduates. And the good, the good news out of COVID is that we had a real need, as you remember from our conversations in the spring, to, to make sure that we, we were assisting those seniors who were graduating in, in navigating what was going to be a very difficult world. And I will say on the seniors who are with us now. And so some of that goal has begun to happen because, out of necessity, right? Out of necessity to make sure that those, those students and their families had support with navigating what was going to be a very different landscape for them in terms of what they thought was going to happen in terms of their college experience before March and what actually ended up happening as they got closer to that experience beginning. So some of that one has begun to, to occur more rapidly than, than, than might have otherwise. So with that said, I can do one thing, sorry. What I took to the operations committee a couple of weeks ago, whoops, that's the wrong one. I don't want to share that one with you yet. That's for next. Sorry about that. Was there, got it now. Isn't technology great? Okay, so were these goals. So one around visibility, although quite frankly, right now I have no visibility in, in buildings outside of, of a virtual visibility once in a while. But right now, these are focused on return to school planning and lessons learned. That, that is, you know, to Tom and Greg's questions of earlier, what have, what have we learned from this time period that may be, that may be helpful to us beyond calendar and those kinds of things as that may be something we, we can implement? Competency-based learning in terms of, of, of a continuation of that goal, because as I said, we're not, we're not there yet. And I know many of your boards are building in goals around this because you play a critical, critical role in the communication piece of this to the community. What they can see on board meetings, whether they're in this format or when we're back in person, is really, really helpful in terms of teacher presentations, in terms of making teachers feel good about what they're doing and, and, and what they're, the work that they're doing on the competency initiatives. And then informing the public as, as to what, what changes that will mean in terms of the way information's reported about their students. Anti-racism and equity, which really grew out of the work earlier this, this year, or that we started actually last year to address equity and anti-racism through board policy. The policy committee in a couple of weeks will see the beginning of that, of that effort. Relationships with our local police departments. You may know that, that there was a, a task force at the state level. Chief Moan from Northampton was on that task force. There are some implications around school resource officers and relationships with schools that we're going to be talking with Chief Moan about, about how those things may evolve differently and look differently in terms of work at our schools. Curriculum instruction, professional development, all those things you saw in terms of that letter that went out earlier this year to make sure, if I had to characterize this one, to make sure that all students can see themselves in our schools and in our curriculum. And that's the goal here that, that I'll build some, some objectives off of. And then commonality, this ongoing goal of, of where do we do things to, where do we do things better together? Right? As an SAU, certainly districts have, have their own characteristics and own, own issues. But there are still, I would, I would venture a, a number of areas where, where we do, where we do things better together. And, and we're going to continue to try to point those out to you and detail the planning and the implementation that might go into those. And so those are, those are the proposed goals, again, that I took to the OC that they've, they've recommended on to you. And I'm happy to try to answer questions about, about any of, any of that that I've just gone through.
Hey, Bill, I don't have any questions, but quick comment. So, um, thank you, first of all. With regard to SAU 21, before and after you've arrived here, I can only speak about, well, I'll speak about Northampton first. Our district is better because of the support from you and your team and the team that you've built. Part of it's about efficiency and cost, as you put in your goal for 2021, no, 21, 22, but more importantly, it's about effectiveness and the quality of the product and instruction we deliver to our students is far greater because we're working collaboratively through you and your leadership. And I thank you for that. And I didn't hear you talk about the, I might've missed it, but the, um, the policies, but the fact that we're more compliant with policies and the discipline you've installed around policy and making sure that we're doing the right things the right way. I think that rigor is very important too, so thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Tom. That, that, that means a lot. I really appreciate that.
Bill, it's Greg Parrish. I'd like to expand on something Jim started the meeting with, what Tom just said. And, and give us a little context for some of the doomed board members, if I may. Typically, I wouldn't do this, but we have a very large number of new board members this year. When the, when we were hiring Dr. Lupini, the joint board got together and we went through several exercises to determine what we were looking for in a superintendent. And there were many factors we looked at, but, but one of the key bottom line issues is we were looking for our new superintendent to take the SAU 21 district to the next level. And we, that's one reason we chose Dr. Lupini. We felt he would be able to do that. In doing that, he's, while he actually started in July that year, from January to June, he was in the district, learning about our district. And that's when he began putting this entry plan together, along with three, four months into that first year. So this entry plan comes from a lot of work. And to Tom's point, Dr. Lupini has elevated this district across the board. I would agree with you, Tom, not just in your district, but our district as well. The, where we are today versus where we were then is night and day. And as a joint board working collectively to get to this point with Dr. Lupini and his team, it's vitally important. And I think we're going in the right direction. And that's why this entry plan was so important for our district. So I, I wanted to put that out on the table as some context for the new board members, because there was a lot of effort put into this to begin bringing our district up another, another level or two. Thank you.
Great. I have a few comments also. Looking at the overall, the SAU has really set some benchmarks because of the progress we've made in integrating the various districts together, sharing resources and such. And this is one of the major items that we had in mind when, as a, as a joint board, we're interviewing, interviewing Dr. Lupini, because we were all sort of working independently and there wasn't a lot of cross-talk. And I see Caroline shaking her head. And it's a fact, and it's really hard to, to explain all of it to the new members because many of the others on this board, we've lived through it. And I've been on this thing for four, over four years now. And I've seen some major, major changes and all good. And we're, we're definitely heading in the right direction. And unfortunately, the COVID has sort of put a, a bit of a stop on some of it because we don't have the one-on-one joint board meetings. We have this. So, but I just wanted to thank very much for, for doing this. And everybody, Caroline, Dave, Rhonda, everyone who's involved with this. Thanks. And Matthew, of course. So Jim, I think if, I'm, I'm happy to again, answer any questions that people may have, but we'd just be looking for acceptance of the board. Then in the January meeting, I sort of, I give an update on those and then provide, as I think most people who were with us in May saw, I do, as part of, these are part of the evaluation process. I provide a self-evaluation to each of the board members before you complete your evaluation of my performance for the year. It includes a set of standard, uh, uh, my assessment against a set of standards for the position of superintendent that the boards have adopted and, and also a self-evaluation of each of the, of the goals here. So I provide you an update at mid-year and then provide that written document at the end of the year as you consider your evaluation of my performance.
Jim, I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent board, the superintendent goals for 21, 22 as presented by the superintendent, with thanks.
I'll second that.
Rhonda, you wanted to vote?
Tony Gialano?
Yes.
Leslie LaFond?
Yes.
Henry Marsh? Henry, you're muted?
Yes.
Heidi Tarasina?
Yes.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Jim Keim?
Yes.
Mike Rabideau?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
Greg Parrish?
Yes.
And Anthony Lang?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the SAU 21 budget proposal for, let's go year 2022. Matt, is that you? Pull up my screen. All right. So we've included some documents in board docs for your review. We have an overview of the SAUs that outlines really the, the roles and responsibilities of the SAU, which includes, you know, general leadership, curriculum and instruction, finance and operations, as well as student services. Additionally, we've included a spreadsheet, Excel of, of our account, our proposed budget, the accounts by line item, as well as the budget worksheets that you are all familiar with or will soon become familiar with, and the PowerPoint. So I do want to thank the operations committee for, for their work reviewing the budget and bringing it forth to the, to the joint board this evening. It's, you know, you, you all know, or you will find out that it's a, you know, it's, it's a very detailed and intense budget process. So thank you to the OC. So this proposed 2021, 2022 budget, you know, we, we're very cognizant while we're developing it of the current economic climates. You know, the, the, in the anticipated revenue declines in each of our towns. And, and, you know, our, our general, the, the, the struggles that our communities either are facing or will be facing both at a town level and a personal level from a financial standpoint. So we, we were very cognizant of, you know, of those, of, of that atmosphere. And we certainly bring forth a budget that's fiscally responsible first and foremost. However, we, we have tried to continue our, our core mission of SA, of the SAU. And I, I believe we have achieved that with this proposed budget in, in proposing a budget that still accomplishes our goal of providing a, you know, tightly coupled SAU, one that works collaboratively. You know, I, you, you've all, we've heard many people speak about the new, the new model for SAU 21, about districts, instead of working separately, working together and really achieving many of those cost efficiencies, shared services, and really improved operations, you know, as an SAU. But then, you know, collectively and individually as districts, we all benefit. So you'll see that, you know, while, you know, while the focus has certainly been, you know, on, you know, navigating COVID-19 and, you know, and, and really providing a new learning model for our various schools and in return to school. We've, we've always kept a, a, a focus on those SAU-wide initiatives. So I just, I want to take a moment to highlight some of the, some of the organizational, you know, improvements and initiatives that we've, that we've been working on over the last year to two years and continue to work on. And that includes, you know, the, the, the work that Dr. Hobbs has done on competency-based education. You'll see in this budget that we're transitioning from more of a consultant-based model to, to in, in-house and, and, and working to continue that initiative with, with our curriculum coordinators, with our curriculum team leaders, as, as well as, you know, Dr. Hobbs and, and our principals. And that's, that's really seen some significant progress and we're excited to continue that. We've also had significant work, you know, Dr. Hobbs has. Um, we've also um, had significant work. Um, you know, Dr. Hobbs has has worked on that um, curriculum review process. Um, we we mentioned the the beginning stages of that math review. Um, you know, we'll, we have every intention of of completing that and then moving into world language and the other disciplines. Um, and that's that's really a change and a and a focus that um, that's going to really benefit all of our districts and the SAU as a whole, as we funnel our students up to Winnicott. Um, Dr. Eric Halian has has, um, you know, worked tirelessly to um, to collaborate between the districts. Um, you know, to to look at our special services. Um, as you know, we have, uh, you know, a substantial portion of our budgets, um, are are um, are embedded in special services, um, special education. Uh, and she's working very closely with our um, directors um, to improve um, those services, um, and also looking at cost efficiencies. Um, you know, she's, there's, um, you know, embedded in our, uh, this past year's budget was, um, a new ESLO um, teacher, um, at the SAU level. So that provided, um, it provided better service for each of our individual districts at a lower cost. Um, because previously, instead of having a single person, we had, um, you know, individual um, part-time employees. So um, you know, so that that's really a a great example of where we improve service um, and save money. Um, she's also looked at and it improved our um, Medicaid reimbursement process. Previously, we use a third-party service. Now we're doing direct billing. Um, and she's worked tirelessly with with those um, educational associates and um, are are very specialists um, to to improve not only um, the services, but also the reimbursement that we're receiving via Medicaid. Um, there's been a number of technology improvements um, that we've implemented um, across the SAU, including, um, you know, this um, you know, our, this, the the platform we're on right now with uh, via via board docs. Um, we were doing electronic signatures via DocuSign. Um, you know, we've, we've implemented frontline absence management to to manage our substitute teachers and and leave for employees. Um, you know, as well as our financial software, we we've we implemented um, a cloud-based SAT software as a service. Um, uh, financial software via via Munis, and we're starting the process of um, and and we've already done a significant portion of um, digitizing many of our processes. Um, you know, you know, um, Dr. Lupini mentioned, um, HR, um, but also AP and and payroll. Now we um, previously, we had on paper, um, pay stubs, and now we are, um, we're doing electronic pay stubs. One of the items Dr. Lupini highlighted um, in his entry planning was um, was evaluations of 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 teaching staff. Um, so we did, um, we did contract out a um, a um, a firm to provide educator evaluation trainer for training for all of our administrators. Um, and we've also, um, you know, done some comprehensive emergency planning. Um, and for the first time, we brought together all of our towns, all of our first responders um, in a room to work together and and in the in develop plans and protocols um, in the event of of an emergency. So, uh, so that's again, that's another initiative that Dr. Hobbs has worked on. Um, to to really um, look at it as an SAU because, you know, obviously, we have students at Winnicott and in our um, various school districts and we're a community as a whole. So it really does make sense to look at it um, as an SAU as opposed to individual towns. So, um, moving into into the budget, um, you know, we, on a, on an annual basis, we were were always cognizant of enrollments. Um, you know, this year is a is a unique situation. So, um, you know, with with the pandemic, um, we we were uncertain how that would affect our our enrollments. Um, you know, we've, we've, um, actually fared fairly well, um, this year as far as maintaining enrollment. So we're currently at um, you know, two thousand four hundred and thirty-four students, um, between in-person and remote learning academy. Um, but um, one, one component of the budget, last year's budget was to conduct a refreshed enrollment projections. So we are pushing that off um, to next, next year. Um, because the the data um, for this year obviously is um, is suspect. Um, and we want to make certain that we have some real um, data, um, so that we can get some refreshed um, enrollment projections going forward, because that's something that we, when we go through the budget process, it's important. Um, when we look at resource allocation and how we budget for each of the individual schools as well as the SAU budget. Um, so next year, we are anticipating um, a slight increase of of to two thousand four hundred and sixty-seven students. Um, and this is based on our actuals from this year, and then we've, we've added in um, a portion of our homeschool and and students that have gone private, um, based on some conversations that that we've had with families and our our best estimates. So, um, when looking at FY twenty twenty-two, um, we are proposing an operating budget of um, two million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So this represents uh, just over a twenty-five thousand dollar increase or a one-two, one point two percent um, increase. Um, so the um, I have included the allocation um, of for each town. Um, so you'll see, um, you know, Hampton Falls allocation of the SAU budget is um, just over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. North Hampton is just under two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Seawork is just over six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, Southampton is at um, sixty-one thousand dollars and Winnicott, um, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So if you recall, um, the, the allocation is based on student enrollment and property valuation. Um, so that that does vary slightly from from year to year, uh, but this does represent that increase. So there are, there are really two primary drivers um, for this budget. So, um, this year, um, we were notified by um, the New Hampshire retirement system that they have increased the um, employer contribution rate um, for our for our teachers and and all of our employees. Um, by, you know, three point two-two percent for teachers and two point eight-nine percent for for employees. And this, I will note that this applies to um, to all municipal employees in all of our towns across the state. So that includes our police, fire, um, and and any other municipal staff. And this is a pretty significant um, a budget hit um, for for all, for all of those budgets. Um, you know, that that represents, you know, you know, with that three percent increase, um, about twenty, twenty cents on every dollar um, for employee salaries, um, you know, fifteen to twenty percent depending on classification. Um, so that's a significant um, chunk of um, of the budget when you're looking at a budget with with salaries that represent eighty, eighty-five percent of the budget. Um, unfortunately, um, the the state has, um, you know, that there, we're essentially, you know, um, paying for an unfunded pension obligation from, you know, decades past. Um, and so now towns are responsible for for, you know, funding that that pension obligation. Um, so this is years um, year, decades in the making. Um, I I believe it was the early nineties where um, where this, where this other retirement system started to be underfunded. Um, and and this happens to be a year that they've, um, they've decided to increase that rate. Um, so when you look at our overall budget, we have an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars and forty-one thousand is in retirement. So if you, if you take out that that retirement increase, we we've actually, um, we're actually proposing a a budget um, reduction. Um, you know, another budget increase is health insurance. Um, so we have a twenty thousand dollar increase in health insurance on this, this reflects a three point four percent guaranteed maximum rate. So that's the GMR for our health insurance premiums. Um, so every year we receive that GMR for our health insurance, um, in October. Um, and then we're, and then, so that's the guaranteed maximum, and then we receive the actual rate um, in March. Um, but for budget purposes, we budget for that, for that GMR, um, and then, you know, it's sometimes it comes in at that, sometimes it comes in slightly lower. Um, additionally, we did have some staffing changes at the SAU that that resulted in some changes in um, election plans. So I'm I'm just going to quickly run through our um, our various departments or fund budget functions um, for the SAU. Our improvement of instruction budget is forty-six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, which is a decrease of twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. So this, this account um, reflects really the professional development funding um, for the SAU at at the SAU level. So it provides for curriculum work. Um, it's that CBE um, initiative. So, um, the the consulting work that we contracted in the past um, is reflected in that decrease because that's, we're no longer, um, contracting out the consultant. Um, there's also been a a reduction in course tuition reimbursement. Um, our Board of Education budget is at twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and one dollars, which is a decrease of sixty-five hundred dollars. Um, so this reflects our um, our post-employment benefits requirements um, per the our annual audit. So we are under Gatsby seventy-five, we are, we are required to um, utilize an actuarial firm to report back on those post-employment benefits. Um, and in it, every other year is the full report and then the abridged report. So this, this coming year is the abridged report, so it's slightly less money. Um, additionally, um, we did have the um, that one-time cost for the enrollment projections in last year's budget that have dropped off. Um, we do, we we are rolling over those funds, so we do plan on utilizing those funds to conduct those projections um, this, this coming year, but we are um, delaying that and that is dropping off the budget. Our Office of the Superintendent Budget is six hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which is an increase of eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. So this represents um, the cost of living adjustment. So I think I actually skipped over a slide, my apologies, the cost of living adjustment. Um, so, um, actually, I'll just jump back there. Call me on it. I'm not trying to hide anything. Uh, so every, um, so we benchmark our cost of living adjustments um, to inflation. So we utilize a a consumer price index, CPI, uh, for our geographic region and that, and we look at July to July. So in this case, it's July of twenty nineteen to July of twenty twenty. Um, and over that um, period of time, we did see a rate of inflation of zero point eight percent. And so we um, budget for our cost of living adjustment for our employee salaries um, accordingly. And I I will note, that's our non-union employees. So in the SAU, we're all non-union. However, when you look at the individual districts, we will be, we will be proposing a zero point eight percent cost of living adjustment for all our non-union employees. However, our two groups that are in the um, CBA, so our teachers, um, who are under the C, um, collective bargaining agreement. Um, they do, they, they have a um, a negotiated CBA that was a cost-of-living adjustment that was approved by the um, voters. It's a four-year contract. So this year, it's two point seven five percent. Similarly, our paraprofessionals, our educational associates, um, they are under a a four-year CBA, and this year it's a um, one percent cost of living adjustment. So, um, so the Office of the Superintendent's increase um, reflects that zero point eight percent cost of living adjustment. Um, steps, step increases, um, as well as an increase in professional dues. Um, and the reason for that, the that increase in professional dues was because previously, um, um, th- those were covered by some grant funding that we have, uh, that no longer apply. Um, so those increases were slightly offset by some savings um, in copier and printer costs. Um, you know, we did identify um, copier and printer costs as an efficiency that we could um, help alleviate SAU-wide. So each individual district had individual had individual contracts for each individual copier. So it wasn't even necessarily the school had a contract. It was, it could have been a, you know, a Xerox, a Canon, a Rico, uh, is is all, you know, disparate contracts, um, which was not very, um, you know, it's not very cost-efficient, um, when when you can look at an entire SAU and really see some cost savings um, by by doing a single um, copier contract across all of our schools. So, um, we did implement that with Canon. Um, so we had, we did upgrade all of our copiers, um, and a number of our printers, um, and we are recognizing savings there. Uh, our human resources budget is at a hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which is an increase of um, three thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and that reflects that zero point eight percent cost of living adjustment um, in step increases. Our fiscal services budget is four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars, which is a decrease of eleven thousand and eighty-nine dollars. Um, so that reflects the removal of um, a one-time um, implementation cost for the fiscal services software. So I had um, I had mentioned earlier that we had done some, you know, we'd gone um, to a SAS for um, for our financials, for Munis, our financial software service. Um, so there were some implementation costs associated with that that have dropped off, and now it's just a recurring subscription fee. Um, and then we, we had our, that was slightly offset by some increases in our cost of living and and staff. Um, our building account is budgeted at thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars, which is um, a decrease of twenty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. Uh, so the primary driver for this decrease um, was on that in previous years, we had some, some building, larger building projects budgeted. Uh, in the last two years, we've budgeted for window replacement and siding projects. Um, so those, those, those projects have not actually occurred because we, it was a multi-year um, funding um, for these projects, um, be because we need, we needed a co- a few years in order to fund them. Uh, so we've set aside those funds, we've encumbered them. Um, and we do plan on completing those projects, utilizing, um, you know, those, those encumbered funds um, out in the unreserved fund balance um, to complete the the siding in the windows in the spring, summer of twenty twenty-one. Initially, we were looking at doing them um, one year at a time. However, uh, after, you know, working with some of our um, some of our contractors, um, and and consulting with them. Um, we feel that we'll get some on price of price efficiencies by doing them at the same time um, with the, with the same vendor. Um, so we're, we're exploring those options now. We just issued an RFP, so we'll get some lock-in pricing for that. Um, our technology account is budgeted at a hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. That's an increase two thousand nine, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So that reflects the cost of living adjustment, uh, step increases, um, our software licensing for DocuSign. Um, and these were offset by some savings in maintenance and um, some technology equipment purchasing. Our employee benefits, it's budgeted at five hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and seven dollars, which is an increase of sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. Um, so this reflects those, those additional retirement costs and the um, the health insurance costs. Uh, so those, those are the, actually, tho- those two items um, are are the, essentially, the entire increase. Um, one last note, um, we do have an unreserved fund balance of a hundred and ninety-two um, thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Um, so that that will, that will be reduced, um, because we have, that includes the funds that have been set aside for the windows and um, and the siding project. Um, that's where we're estimating, that's probably going to be, you know, about sixty thousand dollars for both combined, those two projects. Um, so I am happy to answer any questions in regard to the budget.
And Matt, just for process, just for process, so everybody knows, because not everybody's through this before. Um, there's not a vote tonight on the budget. There is a a requirement for a public hearing that's scheduled for November. And we'd be looking then for the budget to be approved after that public hearing. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, typically, typically, we'll, we'll, we'll vote, um, you know, to for the budget then, but it it's not official until the um, the public hearing.
Yes, Senator?
Uh, yes. Matt, is there any consideration to putting a uh, a ring system? That's the doorbell that you can see who's coming in or would like to come into the SAU. There's no doorbell at the uh, at the office. Is there any consideration to do something like? There's no doorbell at the at the office. Is there any consideration to do something like that?
Well, we're trying to discourage visitors. That that, so we have not had any discussion about a ring system or or doorbell. However, you know, there has been instances where we've had people knocking on the door because, you know, if our our front desk person isn't there. So it's, it's not a bad idea. I think it's something we can, we can discuss potentially adding, you know, the this year.
It's a, it's of a minimal cost to do and you can do it with your phone or whatever. And some some people here, I'm sure have them in their homes. So it was just a consideration to for ease to to either get in the building rather than making a phone call or whatever. Okay, thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Senator. Yeah, we'll 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 actually discuss it. I'm trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible. I don't know if I can, we can afford that eighty bucks, but we'll we'll look into it.
Greg Parrish, did we or do you know, have we budgeted anything under the comprehensive emergency planning for the coming year? This is a great program. I'm glad to be part of it. Just kind of curious if we've had to put money into it, if we have to budget for it, or is this just an ongoing initiative to continue to educate the district?
Yeah, so this is, this is an ongoing initiative. There there aren't any identified costs associated with that.
Okay.
We we did, as you recall, we did contract with with an advisor initially with our emergency planning. So I I think at this point, we haven't identified that as a need. However, if if as we progress, that is something that is necessary, we'll certainly, we'll bring it to the board for your consideration.
Okay, Greg, there's no more need for consult, I mean, that that was, that was great in terms of helping us get it set up. You may recall from those conversations, Exeter is a larger system actually has created a position, an SAU wide position. We were less than half their size. We didn't think that was necessary. If if that came up, that would be one possibility down the line. But but generally speaking, there aren't going to be costs to keeping those discussions going. The cost will be, as you have individual plans done at the building level and there are recommendations in terms of safety enhancements or or staffing or those kinds of things, that would be where most of the the cost might come.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, what one note that I I neglected to mention, you know, we we had initially planned to include a strategic planning consultants in in this year's budget. And that was, that was part of Dr. Lupini's entry plan. That's something that we've, we've been as a, as an SAU administrative team, we've been discussing as far as the next initiative. However, I we we have pushed that off as a future consideration for for next year's budget. But that is something that I will emphasize that we we feel strongly is is very important. And we, I do, I just want to plant the seed that we will be proposing that in, you know, in a future budget year.
Hey, Jim, it's Tom. I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two SAU twenty one budget as reviewed by the OC and presented for public hearing.
Sir, a second? My second bed.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Armina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Mike Rabideau?
Yes.
Jim Kine?
Yes.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
I D. Terracina?
Yes.
Henry Marsh?
Yes.
Leslie LaFond?
Yes.
And Tony Delano?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Next is other business, the school reopening models.
This is me, yes, thank you. So a a a great risk. I I want to talk with you a little bit about some very, very preliminary, I'm going to keep saying very, very preliminary information from a staff survey and which is, which ended today. And a parent survey, which is only two days into to five, five days of of asking parents some some questions. And as I think I said in the email where I sent you that survey, there are questions around our models. There are questions around the end of the trimester, which is a, which is fast approaching and is a, an important day for us as you're going to see in a number of ways. And some questions around the holidays where we already know that there are some districts that are looking at making some accommodations or considering some accommodations around the holidays because of the 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 DHS recommendation around quarantining for two weeks if you leave New England. So our our thought was it would be good to have some data on on what those numbers might look like. And I guess I would say on top of everything I'm about to sort of present to you, which again is very preliminary data with no recommendations for tonight. Those things will come to individual boards probably in November or a joint board meeting that we may need to bring to get, bring together. Because as you're going to see, we've got some significant challenges in front of us in the next four, five, six weeks that I want to talk with you about. What's not on this list is just what we're seeing in terms of the data in our area where numbers are increasing of of the virus. And and right now, without going any, any, in any detail here, where I have, well, if you consider more than fifteen students in a in quarantine situations to be significant, and I do. So I have two schools that are in significant situations with respect to to specific incidents in those schools. Broad, essentially brought in from the, from the outside, from outside events, but which are impacting the schools and their ability to deliver in-person instruction right now. So, you know, it's not a scientific thing, but I will tell you, it's where I've spent most of my last two days. And principals have spent a lot of their last two days. So we have a feeling we're seeing, we're seeing more situations where 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 those things may result. But but what I want to share with you tonight are just four essential thoughts based on what we think we're seeing in in the data. Again, much more to come as we, as we get these data in final form as we're able to tear them apart. But I just want to share some thinking with you. Did I give enough caveats there? That was my goal. So, number one, a significant number of employees and families have indicated that they will travel out of New England over Thanksgiving and or the December holidays and will therefore need to quarantine for fourteen days following these trips. This could, and again, we haven't looked at them by school yet and we don't even have the parent data in final yet. This could, however, cause us to have some staffing and attendance issues during these weeks. Okay, complicating this for staff is that the Thanksgiving period is still within the period of time under which the FF-CRA is in effect. So our interpretation, the interpretation we've received from legal counsel is that if someone needs to take that two week period for quarantine following Thanksgiving, they they would qualify for an FF-CRA leave, a paid leave. If they, however, believe the the FF-CRA, unless it's reauthorized, ends on December thirty first. So if those people did that over the December holiday break, they would not qualify for an FF-CRA leave. And and based on the information that we have in front of us now, we believe they would have to take unpaid leave to do that. So, you know, just to make it more complicated, again, we have a significant number of people indicating in our surveys that they plan to go out of New England for one or both of those of those times. Number two, parents of a significant number of students currently enrolled in the Remote Learning Academy have indicated that they would prefer to have their children return to in-person instruction for the second trimester. Given our numbers in in-person instruction at Barnard, Seabrook Elementary, Lincoln Acreman and North Hampton K to five, in many of those classrooms, those numbers would put us over acceptable classroom numbers if they truly intend to return. We asked them for a commitment through the first trimester. And again, we're surveying them. So this could jeopardize the current in-person model. That is, the five day a week model at Barnard, Seabrook Elementary, Lincoln Acreman and North Hampton. Okay, again, not final data, two, two days in, but we're seeing some significant enough numbers. Quite frankly, with this one, any numbers are significant numbers, given the balancing act that we've achieved. Three, a meaningful number of parents at Seabrook Middle School, North Hampton, grade six to eight, and Winneconne High School have indicated that they wish for their children to remain in a remote model even if the school returns to in-person instruction for the second trimester. You remember surveys back in June where we were seeing it Winneconne at fifteen percent as a number wanted their children in a remote situation. They did not wish for their kids to return to school. Twenty percent at a North Hampton Middle School. Those are meaningful numbers to us because right now we have no remote learning model for those kids. Right? Our remote learning model is everybody's remote. That's our remote learning model for them right now. So if we bring kids in, we have to come up with something else. We need, we have some work to do. And finally, while most Winneconne parents have indicated that they support some in-person instruction, even if it means disrupting the current five day a week synchronous model, over twenty percent of the parents who've responded to date prefer to remain in a total synchronous remote model. So that's saying somewhat the the same thing. We have a, we have an issue in providing that remote model. If we, if we switch to some sort of an in-person model, and by the way, when I say in-person model, I am including now under that umbrella. In all of these situations, I am including under that umbrella of element two, three and four. I'm including the possibility of some, something that's hybrid. That is, it has kids in some days of the week and remote some days of the week. Because that may be the only way that we can achieve the numbers in classrooms. So again, I think I said to my group today, I I was interested in being here tonight to share some pain. We we thought it was really important to do these surveys, to do them early so that we could have some beginnings of thinking by the end of this month because we think we owe people some notice on the second trimester on any activity that we may, and any changes that we may recommend to boards with respect to the holidays because of the significant number of people who've indicated to us that they are traveling. And what that does if those significant numbers of staff and students have to quarantine for two weeks following those holidays. And that is, that is right now the requirement.
Is it a requirement though, Bill? Or is it just in New Hampshire, I thought it wasn't a requirement. I thought it was just a a
It's, it's not a suggestion from DH. It's, 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 it's in place from DHHS. It was at the beginning of the year and it is, and it is now. So, so, you know, and stop sharing. Again, I don't have any recommendations tonight. We don't have any recommendations tonight. We have a lot more data to crunch. We have a lot of work to do with principals. Principals haven't seen what I just showed you. We have a meeting with them next Tuesday. We intend to discuss with them, talk about what it means, to talk about what that may mean in terms of how we increase the number of kids that we have in person and do it safely. Right? And then bring some recommendations to you. So I'm, I can try to answer any questions or quite frankly, I'll end up ducking them probably more than
And Bill, will you discuss this at our board meeting tomorrow? At at Winneconne, but my my question is, how many parents responded to the questionnaire?
So again, here's the problem with even what I'm doing tonight. I'm two days into a five day survey window.
Okay, I'm fine.
Yeah, I'm two days into a five day survey window. I will tell you right now, and this is one of those ones like we did over the summer where we need a hundred percent. We will contact people to get their responses. But we're at about forty percent response as of the last time I looked at it today. But you can already see some, some some issues that we're going to be dealing with.
Leslie, I saw your hand up.
No, I think you pretty much said it because I was going to ask, you said twenty percent of Winneconne parents. And I was going to say twenty percent of how many?
Yeah, we're, well, I, again, each schools, schools vary within that forty percent is across the SAU, Leslie.
Okay.
I think, I I quite frankly, don't remember. I think it was in the three, four hundred of that was the high school as of today.
Okay.
But significant enough to begin to look at and say, uh-oh, not significant enough to draw conclusions on.
No, it's just, it is comical because, not comical, I mean, yes, it is. Because we get the, you know, the letters that are demanding that we all go back. And then when when push comes to shove, we're getting a higher percentage saying they want to stay removed.
Yeah, the the, and and you know, we have, I I mean, those people, I mean, I will say this, those people don't contact us.
Yeah.
Right? Those, the people, but we have, we have from the very beginning seen what I think is a significant percentage, fifteen to twenty percent, who wanted remote. Right? From the very beginning. That's been consistent in every survey we've done. More so at some schools than others, but at the high school, I'll say it's been in that twelve to twenty percent every time we've surveyed people. And, you know, high schools are complicated in terms of how you provide some kind of a remote model, right? It's not like you hire a first grade teacher and you say, okay, we're all set, right? It's much more complicated in terms of a student's schedule for a math class, a social studies class, electives, whatever. But this at least gives us the data early enough, we knew in anticipation of the trimester that we have some challenges in front of us at all your schools. If you're in person now, you can walk away from this saying, I think Bill just said to us that our in-person model, as we're running it right now, is is challenged by some of the results of of this survey. And if you asked me that question, I would say, yes, you've interpreted what I've said correctly.
Tom, I see your hand up.
So, Bill, you certainly have given enough caveats, so you may not have the answers that I get then.
Thank you, Paul.
Two questions just for you to consider as you go through this. And thank you for doing the surveys. The first one is, I I wonder if families may rethink their travel plans if they understand the implication of traveling out of state, as my family's considering, you know, here, I'm sure others are as well. And we're even, you know, considering whether we invite folks up to our house from out of state. So I want to make sure that, I don't want to make sure, I'd like to suggest that families understand the implication if they choose to travel, then it may impact their their students' ability to come to school.
Yeah, we're much more, I'm not confident of anything. I'm I'm more confident that families understand and have given us good responses because they put a name to it, an email address and whatever than I am with the staff survey, which for now is anonymous.
Got it. So just, I would encourage you to just talk about the implications with folks, because they may, they may choose to make different decisions this year, as weird as twenty twenty is, right?
Yes.
Second thing I, you may not have the answer to, but I'd like to understand at some point down the road, if not tonight, is while fifteen to twenty percent certainly is meaningful, does that mean that the minority fifteen to twenty 15 to 20% drives the decisions for the majority, 85 to 80%? So if we said we're in school. For fifth, sixth, seventh grade in North Hampton, for example, do we say that can't happen because 15% of the families don't want that?
No. What it means is we have to have a model. That takes their educational needs into account. As well. And that's up, and that's complicated. No, it's a great question. Thank you for it. So no, but it does mean. It 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 it's it's not as if, I think some of you, based on what you hear. Would think from some feedback that it's 100% want to come back to school. That would create its own problems.
Yeah.
But but we do have modeling that needs to occur to to meet those those students' needs as well.
So in a typical year, just quick follow-up, in a typical year, if there was a family that wanted their child to learn remotely. Would it be incumbent upon the district to create a model to accommodate that? Child because their family said they wanted to learn remotely, or would they come to school because this is where you learn?
Right. In a typical year, we'd say, look, there are homeschool options, there are V-Lax options. So the answer really answer your question is we'd probably recommend they look at V-Lax. Right? But but no, but but this is, this is not. And and as we we talked about. Similar question, I think that you asked a few months back. You know, people are running remote models of 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 differing types. To force for differing grade levels. To to meet the needs of of those families. So. In a typical year, we would say, here are some options for you. Unfortunately, V-Lax was maxed out. So that no longer was an option for us to 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 recommend to them. There have been some slots that have opened up since. The governor. Put some money to that, but I don't think it's significant enough to help us. But 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 then we build a robust K to four model. Which again, we're going to have to look at depending on the number of kids and then figure out other ways of accommodating. Students within sort of that five to 12. And we have some ideas of how to do that. But no, the 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 it's not a matter of of the minority necessarily driving. Our ability to bring kids in in person.
Okay, thank you.
Well, have there been any changes? In the spacing requirements within schools?
No, and let me say this. I mean, they still publish the three to six feet, but but I can, and some of you've heard me say this, and so if you have, I apologize. But but the minute you get into a contact tracing situation. And I see Stephanie's here at this meeting, and Stephanie's actually the first person that had this experience. The first question they ask. Is can you tell us which people? Have been within six feet. Of this person who has tested positive for more than 10 minutes cumulative. Right? They don't say three to six feet. They say inside six feet. So, so it's six feet. Right? So, no, they haven't, they haven't modified. They haven't modified any of that.
Okay, Anthony, I saw you had a question.
Yeah, thanks, Jim, and thanks, Bill. So two questions. So you said the FF-CRA has protection for teachers that. Would travel for the holiday and would get paid leave. Is there any protection for the SAU? For those that do so like knowingly and willingly putting themselves into a situation that could cause us to have to give them paid leave?
No, they're entitled to that leave, and I'm going to get, I'm not going to try to cite it. Matt, if you can help me out, please do. But there's a particular part of the law that says if the if the. If the governor of a particular state puts a particular requirement into place. Then then FF-CRA would cover. You under under that. I'm I'm sure I've gotten all the wording wrong there, but 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 the legal interpretation that we received. Is that if people traveled outside of New England, now we can go back and explore that a little bit more. In terms of, you know, decisions around holidays versus someone has to leave New England because of a medical family emergency, those kinds of things. But that's the, that's the interpretation we were given when we. When we explored that question this summer.
Okay. Yeah, it seems like there would be a small amount of necessary reasons to travel specifically around the holidays that that might give us. You know, some some protection. The other item was, and this may have been talked about way before my time, so I apologize, but. COVID has changed the amount of students that can be in a building. Is there any change to the capacity of each physical building? That would help us in a situation where. We would go over. So I imagine in a normal situation, while we may have never come into it. The fire capacity for a building, if we had 200 kids and the fire department said, your building maximum is 200. There must be a contingency for a 201st child that moves into the school. Because the fire department says that they're not physically allowed to be in the building based on those requirements.
Well, most of those requirements in buildings, I I I've not, I've not, I'm probably not as aware of those numbers for these buildings as I am some other districts I've worked in. But generally speaking, those numbers are way beyond. What we've ever put into or would ever put into a classroom. These numbers that we're dealing with now. Involve looking at what does, what does essentially in most classrooms, emptying a classroom of all furniture in order to maximize the number of kids. And then spacing out desks. Six feet, you know, middle of desk, middle of desk. What does that look like? And what does that allow us in terms of a maximum number of kids? And that's a smaller number.
Yeah, I just didn't know since the, you know, the safety complex in most of our towns is the fire department that makes that initial building capacity. Given the new directive from the state that we can only have X amount of students based on social distancing. Is there any ability to help ourselves out by reassessing building capacity? So when the 150th kid wants to come back in. We actually have something to go back to that parent with. No, they can't come because we don't have enough room. We can actually have something that said. Because the safety complex in our town has said there physically can't be more than X amount of students based on the new guidelines.
Yeah, thanks for that. That helps. So based on my conversation with legal counsel, no.
Okay. It's fair. Fair answer, but.
Yeah, no, we don't have the ability to say, oh, sorry, second grade's full. No, we 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 don't, we don't have that ability. And so it drives us. To look at other models, whether there's some form of of hybrid. Or or remote.
Okay, just to piggyback on that one, we did talk about that before. I mean, is there a way politically to see if there could be a temporary, I don't know the exact legal term? Is that something that could be addressed, though? Because you do run into the scenario. Where people have seen that, you know, within schools, they've largely been, it's largely been successful. And I would imagine parents who've been remote may want to come back in, and that's going to create a major issue. For all individuals.
Yeah, I can explore it again.
Yeah, I think it'd just be, it'd be worth at least. Running it up the flagpole.
I'm happy to have that conversation again, and and I know we have a, I saw it. I know these issues are going to be discussed statewide at our meeting. I saw it, David and Caroline on the agenda for Friday. Both the holiday issues and a lot of people, a lot of people ask for these, these one trimester or so. Commitments and are running into similar kinds of requests. And so I think it's going to be a conversation at our statewide meeting on Friday morning. As well. But I will talk to Bob again.
Thank you.
Again. Well, thank you for whoever I forget. I think it was Tom said, I've given enough caveats. That, yeah, the very preliminary, but I wanted to sort of say to you, here's what we're seeing. Here's what we have in front of us. Here's some some things we're going to be needing to come to you with some recommendations on. In terms of dealing with these things. Over the next few weeks, probably your November meetings, although as as Henry mentioned. I'm sure return to school will be a conversation for us at Winnacun at meeting tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking at here, we don't have the quorum, right, Rhonda, for to go back on policy?
Correct, we do not.
We we don't. So you know, Rhonda, what I think we'll do. If it's okay with you, Jim, if we if we see that we're going to have a quorum. Of each board at that public hearing, we'll we'll hold it for then. If not, we'll have to take it through each individual board in November. I mean, we're ready to start on another round of. Very important policies, including the Title IX discussion and all at on November 4th. And I don't want to sort of, you know, clog up the works with with two complete sets of policies that that have to be adopted. So. We'll we'll shoot for that, and if that isn't going to work, then we'll take it through each individual board in November.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Just next on the agenda is future meetings. We have the Policy Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 4th at 4:30. And the Joint Board Public Hearing. On Monday, November 9th at 6 o'clock. And I do not believe we have anything that's required on a non-public.
We do not.
No, I just a quick note, I do believe we will have to have a quorum at the public hearing meeting in order to pass the budget.
It's a quorum of, but it's not a quorum of each budget, of each board.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Form of the, yeah, there are two different forum definitions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Henry, did you have?
Yeah, just just real quick, we have a board meeting tomorrow. Can we vote on those policies tomorrow? To get one.
I mean, that, listen, I don't mind doing that. That would, that would commit me to starting through the each board meeting model.
Okay.
No, Henry, it's probably the safest way to do this. You're probably right.
That that way, every, at a board meeting, you're going to have a quorum. So with this, you may or may not.
This is the first time we failed on this, but Rhonda, can we, can we still add those to that agenda? Would you do that for tomorrow night?
Yeah, I'll be able to add those.
Thank you, Henry.
If that's okay, if it's not.
It's certainly okay, and I really appreciate the offer. Thank you.
Yeah, it didn't look like anything was too. Controversial in there, so. Okay, anything else before?
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, thank you all.
Let me get a second.
Third.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Night.
Good night.
Go vote.